Would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, I'm going to have you state the prayer. But before we say the prayer. Ephesians 6, 12, 13. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. Therefore take unto you the whole armor of God, that ye may be able to withstand in the evil day, in having done all to stand. Victor.
Father God, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. We're asking, in humility, God, we're asking for your direction. God, we ask that you will put upon our hearts, God, the purpose that you have brought us here for. Give us vision, Lord, to accomplish the task that you have sent us forth to do. Lord, we place ourselves in your hands. Help us to hear and to see the things that you want us to do. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Pastor Johnson.
Here.
Pastor Foster.
New year, new hopes.
Pastor Locke.
Dear Mayor of Colorado.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The coroner's required.
Modifications to agenda. Okay. Approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting December 3rd. Minutes of special meeting December 15th. Minutes of special meeting December 16th. Review and approval of counts payable. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting December 3rd, December 15th, December 16th, and a review and approval of counts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Councilor Locke.
Aye.
Councilor Foster.
Aye.
Councilor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor of Colorado.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Affirmations, communications, and appointments. Manuel Lopez.
Good evening, Council. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting Mr. Manuel Lopez's one-year certification for being here with the city of Montevista. As you know, he has a different uniform than most of public works. But he did work in the public works for his year here, for at least for the most part of it. Found him to be an exceptional employee. He worked with us in our streets. And due to the COVID and the budgetary restraints where we weren't able to hire seasonal help, he went ahead and he pretty much, him and Vic, kind of ran all of our parks and kept them green and picked up the trash, plus did all the other pothole patching and everything else. Since Manuel's been hired on with us, he has proved to be an asset, not only to the public works, but to the city. And when he came to me and said that his heart wanted to go towards code enforcement and asked me for a recommendation, I was far absolutely happy to bestow that. If his heart is towards code enforcement, not only would I believe, he will represent the city very well in a very difficult position. And I cannot speak high enough for this young man. I think he's done an extremely great job for public works. I told him when we did the interview and Chief was looking at him, that Chief would be an idiot, not too bad. So, and I think Chief would hopefully echo my comments that so far, in our military terms, Manuel is a heart charger and it's exactly what we need within the city. So with this, I'd like to present Manuel one year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, did you want to say anything or something?
No, I tell you, Manuel's already an absolute phenomenon because of code. He's come up with some processes and he's already taken code way past what I would have expected to do at this point. So we actually have an actual structured training program to work with him through codes. Somewhere around there, an actual MTO program that we do with the officers. So we're giving him some good training and stuff. And I think the officers are actually putting stuff for Manuel on code enforcement stuff. So he is doing phenomenal. He's already way ahead. And I like, one of the biggest things I like about Manuel is he came to me and said, "Look, I think instead of just being a hammer, we need to work with the citizens and community and fix things rather than writing tickets." There's a time for tickets and Manuel has already, he's already made the difference by incidents and stuff that he's dealt with. And he's getting compliance versus having to write a ticket. So again, he's going to be a great asset to Rob and those guys. And he's been a phenomenal guy for us all. So pleased to have him on.
Thank you. Citizen comments and special presentation scheduled appearances. Order being included on this portion of the agenda. You have filed the appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Wow.
He just went and made a copy of something or he'll be right back.
Yeah, all those out of which gone too.
Just give it to him.
I know, that's good.
You're up.
Get your thought on that.
Sir. I have one thing on the agenda for you tonight, and it is our HUTF mileage certification. This is an annual process for the state of Colorado where we as an entity that receives what we call HUTF highway users' tax fund money, which is basically your gasoline tax. But we must certify our mileage every year. There's a process that I go through on my end where I make any changes to our road system, additions, deletions, changes in status. And the only change we had this year was the actual change of classification on Davis Street from Fort Delarion from a gravel road to a pavement structure, which will give us a little bit more money. So with that, a general synopsis, the summary of our mileage certification is the city has 7.49 miles of arterial streets, 21.4 miles of local streets for a grand total of 28.89 miles that are HUTF eligible. So I would need the mayor and the city clerk to attest that the mileage is correct and certify our annual so we can start receiving funds. Any questions you might have on it? Okay. I don't think we need a vote, do we, just forced? We never have, just having the mayor sign.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Montevista Historical Society Annual Report for October 2019 to September 2020.
So, Mr. Mayor, the report is actually in your packets. And there was no one available to be present this evening for the Historical Society. If you want me to read it in the record, I will, or if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. Will you please?
The Montevista Historical Society Annual Report for October 2019 to September 2020. Due to the Corona-19 virus, the activities for the past year have been minimal. During the winter months, the History Center has had no water. Freezing was suspected and the bathroom was heated. The Public Works Department was able to remedy the situation, and we are most grateful. The photo albums and computer were moved to the Transportation Museum in the fall with the intention to work on them during the winter and spring. Again, due to the virus, it was thought safer not to pursue this. Following the telephone poll of board members, it was also thought safer to keep both the History Center and the Transportation Museum closed for the 2020 season. Both the Colorado-Wyoming Association of Museums and various women's surfrages events were canceled. Reading of Montevista Journal to update the bridge to yesterday, book continues. Inquiries for family information or locations on certain buildings have been answered. Cooperation within individuals seeking photos of historic preservation continues. Planning, or excuse me, playing cards are for sale at the Chamber of Commons in the Montevista Co-op. A book about the Teft family, history of Creed, and the Swoop of the Cranes have been donated to the museum. Tourist maps feature and add of the Historical Society and are available here today. Thanks to the Carnegie Public Library for its assistance throughout the year. And big thanks to all volunteers and board members. Board members are Kay Campbell, Lori Ellathorpe, Tammy Facet, Wanda Harmon, Norma Valdez, and Peg Schall.
Thank you, Nita. Citizen comments. City Council, welcome to your scheduled comments. Please leave the comments for three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Be sure to sign your name on that paper there, please.
My name is Burginda Archuleta. I live at the home on Pioneer Road called the Boat High House. And I am here because I want to open a homeless shelter in Montevista. Any questions?
Do you have a proposed location for this shelter?
If anything, right on the west side at 69 Pioneer Road, the Boat High House. I will be going back home to Sonora, Mexico, back home to Marana, Arizona, back home to Madrid, New Mexico. And I want to use my house as a homeless shelter. So it's 69 Pioneer Road.
Are you operating under any nonprofit entities that?
I don't, ma'am, I don't need any entities. I have enough financial means to provide everything on my own.
Not work up the financial end of it as much as I am the, the homeless shelters are held to a standard.
Yes, I will be, I will be speaking to the government, Colorado government. I'm just letting you know in advance what I'm seeking. I will be using my address, 69 Pioneer Road, without any entities. And I will use it as a homeless shelter. And I'm letting the mayor know that it's on the west side. So I'm beginning here, then writing letters and appearing in person with the Colorado government. And I will do everything in my power that I can to get this homeless shelter started. So I wish that you think about it and that you respect my idea because I'm doing it all on my own, like I said financially, without my entities. And I just want you to think about it and let me know.
I think it's a very kind-hearted idea. I would be interested in seeing some more planning.
I thank you and I'll let you know all this documentation and stuff and what you read. You can make copies and share it with others. Pastor Johnson, he already knows I've already talked to him about it earlier. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have questions?
Forrest, did you have something?
Well, there were definitely decent code issues on that, Mr. Mayor. A little cold to bring that up, but certainly you thought the city staff for it. Pretty sure in that residential zone that it would not be allowed use by right. It might be a special review. But we would need to talk about it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And if it can't be in that location, I will purchase the home anywhere in Montevista to make that possible.
So maybe we can get together. Pretty sure I have your phone number. Maybe we could set up a appointment and kind of talk about that location and other possibilities.
Can I give you my phone number just for the bill?
Sure.
I have spent the last 12 years looking for property and I own a lot of property in Montevista. And I just sold the property that's down the street from the historical shelves, go down the little driveway towards Coors. I just sold that property. I tended it to be there and I allowed a young man to rent the property and he had like about 100 people living there. But I just recently sold it and went to court because he took me to court. And what I'm saying is, please think about this because I have prayer, I'm a prayer warrior and it's going to happen. So if there is a location that you prefer, southeast, north, whatever, but I'm going to open my place. Because there are a lot of community people that don't have a place to go to, they don't have a place to stay. But I have the bridge per se, and that doesn't have to happen. I allow them to pray in my house. I feed them, I take them groceries, I take them anywhere they wish. I do my part. Now I'm asking you to please consider what I'm saying because it is going to happen because only the Creator above makes decisions. So I just need you to decide where would be a good location. Sorry, I went over my friend's.
What a joy it is to see all these happy faces once again. Feel like we're happily normal. Hi, everybody. Council, Forrest, everybody. I just want to say a couple of things about, first of all, the tree lighting was amazing. We had people there, we had happy singing. I mean, it was just a joy to see that. And the tree is outstanding. And to see the tree out here lit, that's perfect. We could use a few more lights, but that's just me. And then I also want to say thank you to Jennifer for creating the walk and the drive around. Amy and I spent, I bet, all evening doing that. And it was delightful of the places that are lit up for Christmas and that. It was just fun. So thank you, Jennifer, for spearheading that. That was a good project. I have one little thing. I was disappointed, the info center, nada, no light, no leaf, nothing. There was nothing at the info center. And that surprised me. I thought, you know, something could have been done. And hopefully, next year, the businesses on 160 will be a little bit more Christmasy and put some, you know, it doesn't cost a lot of money to buy string lights and put them in your window. It looked a little bare. Adams was really lit up and, I mean, you know, it looked nice, but I was, I thought it could have been a little more, just my thoughts on this. But anyway, thank you, Rob, for all you did. It was beautiful. Our town, I've never seen so many houses lit up. It was amazing. And people are kind, generous, more thoughtful. I really think one of the good things from this virus is people are thinking more about what's important in life. And, you know, our Creator is in charge. So thank you, and I hope we get this place opened up. You know, city hall, open. I hate dropping my ball off down there.
How do you worry first?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marlo. Is there anybody else? Nika, is there anybody on Zoom?
No, there is not.
There is not? Eric, you got anything? Okay. Still nothing on Zoom? I need to read that.
Yeah, I don't have any attendees. My panelists, Jim Belknap and Anika are on, but they're just on as staff.
Okay. All right. Flow carries, look for license, resolution, ordinance. Left-hand contracts, agreements, leases, city manager contract.
Quite a word, I miss you, Mayor. It seems to be the second time that a finished, presented, voted, and passed issue has been brought up by staff before the council. I'm not sure what the exact wording of our charter is on that subject. It just seems a little odd that this keeps coming up. I'd like to suggest that this be bypassed since this main issue has already been settled.
If on me, Mr. Mayor, it was requested to be put on the agenda by the mayor of the city, which is probably, Counselor, I requested it to be put back on here, not requested by staff. It was requested by me.
Okay, I stand for it. I was, I was not aware of it.
Jennifer?
So to kick off this conversation, I'm going to start with the mission statement of the Finance Department. The mission statement of the Finance Department is, "In the spirit of faith, integrity, teamwork, and innovation, it is the mission of the Finance Department to provide timely and accurate financial information to the constituents of the city of Montevista while protecting the city's assets and creating transparency. The Finance Department emphasizes a service-oriented team approach to meet regulatory responsibilities, address operational needs of the city and to other departments within the city, and to help promote sustainability and financial soundness for years to come. I was raised in a poor household. We didn't have the luxury of frivolous things. However, my parents taught me that if I was honest with my peers, I worked hard and I made a name for myself, one that was associated with honesty and integrity, I would be the richest person in all the right ways. I want council to understand that if I come before you and present information to you, whether the decision you have to make is big or small, you will have all the financial facts you need to make a sound business decision. I have not, nor will I ever, come before this council and present information that isn't backed by facts, my sources cited, and information that anyone can understand. That is my job as a finance director. I recently came before council with numbers that were in fact accurate and a true representation in regards to the salary of the city of Alamosa's city manager. Attached to my memo that's in your packet, you will see information provided by the city of Alamosa's HR coordinator in regards to their city manager, and their pay scale was right in line with the estimate I presented to council. My estimate was the salary was between $120,000 and $130,000, which was on the low side of what she actually makes. Her annual salary with base and taxable stipend income is $130,317.60, which is far closer than the statement that she makes $80,000 per year, as quoted by an unknown source at the city of Alamosa.
When we reviewed the city manager's contract last month, we did so based on information from Councilman Larry Foster about the salary of the Alamosa city manager. The figure he gave us was about $50,000 off. Based on this misinformation, I'd like to make a motion that we pay our city manager $121,261, starting tonight. For the next two years, I would like the city attorney to correct the contract and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. This would put the city manager in a fully qualified range according to our wage policy. That was my motion.
That was a motion? And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. They accept the city manager's contract based on changes that might, the city attorney will take care of, at the set amount. Is there any more discussion? What was that amount again, please? Thank you.
One correction, no decision was made on, excuse me, on that $80,000 figure. I quoted a figure of in the vicinity of $120,000, which is a little more accurate. And that's what we based our decision on. Both the city manager and the finance director made it clear that this was not a merit increase. A couple of years ago, we did a merit increase on our own and awarded more than what was asked for by the city manager and increased his contract from one year to two years. That's when things were a little more normal. What we are dealing with right now is a situation that is unique in the history of this planet. Maybe that's a little strong, but it's, it is unique. We recently turned down a request by the Waste Management Company for a 3% increase in the trash collection service because we considered it an insult to the people of Montevista to hit them with, like I think we said before, a reasonable amount, but during unreasonable times. People are struggling. I don't know if anybody in here is. I think our city staff and employees are doing fairly well and others are working. There's a lot of, a lot of folks in this town that are struggling a lot. Don't know if you've been out in the streets to talk to them, but if 3% increase, according to Waste Management, worked out to about 57 cents or something, was unreasonable, then 22% increase for the highest paid employee in the city is way beyond insulting. There will come a time to make up for some of this. I've read the report from the finance director about all the wonderful things that have been accomplished, and I have no argument with that whatsoever. What has been accomplished in the Finance Department and in pretty much every other department has been terrific, and that's what they were hired to do. If this is not a merit increase, then what it amounts to is an increase or an adjustment based on a matrix that was set up back in 2018, long before anybody ever heard of Corona, unless they were beer drinkers. But this particular malady has created problems that nobody can really explain. And certainly, people all over town and all over this country, all over the world for that matter, are struggling to deal with. This is neither the timing or the place to consider a 22% increase for our highest paid employee. I'm glad to make it up when some of this gets recovered, which is what we put into our motion at the last meeting, that at the end of one year, this would all be reviewed. This is perfectly fair, perfectly honest. The only issue that keeps coming up is that it doesn't fit the grid. Well, if it doesn't fit the grid, then we need to change the grid.
Well, based on the fact that we did this wage study and you are the one that voted to get the wage study, you made the motion, then when they brought that wage study to us, you made the motion to accept it. The money has been in there, finances for all the raises that we have discussed based on this. This has all been done prior to, to say that, yes, there are people that are struggling, Garrett, that's a fact. This has all been done prior to, to say that, yes, there are people that are struggling, Gary, that's a fact. But we need to keep everything the way we started two, two years ago. Then you said yourself that this council has done nothing. You said that.
Point of order, while the mayor stopped, or the moderator stopped addressing the motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I would call for a vote.
Can a citizen make a comment?
No.
No.
That's not fair. So you can't refer to citizens of Montevista, but a citizen can't comment? Our meetings are run under laws of order?
Okay.
During this, no, at another time, yes, but not right now.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. If you're calling for the question, it does require a vote. It requires a motion from the council, and it requires a two-thirds majority.
We have a motion. We have a second. In regards to the city manager contract.
No, you're, you're saying you're calling the question.
No, I called a point of order that the moderator is not supposed to address the question.
So you're stopping the discussion?
Not stopping his discussion.
No, but he's stopping the discussion. Said we have a motion on the floor and we need to vote.
We did.
That is not your prerogative. Sorry. If somebody's going to call the question, then they need to say so. There needs to be a second, and there needs to be a vote.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. If somebody wants to call the question, that's in the form of a motion. We need a second, and then there's a vote.
I did make a motion, and it was seconded.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm talking about.
No, to call the question, if that's intended to call the question to end discussion, then there'd have to be a motion by either the council and a second, and then a vote to approve calling the question, in which case all discussion would end, and then the motion that we made originally, Council lot, would then be considered for a vote.
Call the question is a separate issue.
So I made that we stop discussion and go to a vote?
Well, so you need to move formally to call the question.
I made to call the question.
Right, second. It's been moved, it's seconded, need to call the question. Is there any more discussion?
Actually, it's not simply discussed.
What?
It's not to be discussed.
Oh, okay. Maida, vote please.
Counselor Foster?
Nay.
Counselor Johnson?
Nay.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion passes, to call the question?
Actually, that requires a two-thirds majority, which would be four votes. If I'm here on that, then I'll stand corrected. That does happen to be Robert's rule of order.
So the motion is still live, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And discussion is still open.
My basis for voting against this, or voting for the number I did last time, was not based on the research that had been done. It was not based on the numbers that were presented. I have no fault with the numbers that you have presented. It was more the principle of the matter of much along the lines of what Gary was saying, that I had a very hard time looking at my constituents. When the median household income is, what, roughly $34,000, $35,000, depending upon what source you look at, and we're looking for a raise that's, what, five, half, half of a median salary. It's not, it's the principle of the matter that bothers me, and that's the why, reason why I haven't continued to vote against that number.
The principle of the matter is, is that we have a professional city manager who is way above entry-level experience, entry-level work, entry-level training, entry-level certifications. He constantly takes continuing education, he does seminars, he goes everywhere he's asked to go in order to stay current in his profession. Different professions call for different salaries. His profession calls for an appropriate salary. It is not based on what everyone else in the town makes. It is not based on a 3%, which worked out to be 54 cents per customer, NDS, waste. In fact, I would imagine if we were to offer Forest 54 cents per citizen, that would probably come up to be more than what we're asking for now. I believe this has been discussed, it's been, it's been talked about. I think that Ms. Sein's figures have been quite wrongly questioned. She has given us absolutely no reason to think that she would ever give us incorrect or dishonest information. And I deeply believe if she were ever incorrect, she would correct herself. So my motion stands.
I have no issue whatsoever with anything you just said, councillor. It is not simply the right time or place to be in discussions. And I believe that those who we represent and work for would agree with me. And I would intend, fully intend, to prove that with a referendum vote if this thing did pass after we already passed it at our last meeting. So if you're ready for that expense and that trouble, then we'll go ahead. And if you want to listen to reason and listen to the voice of the people, because that's what I am. I don't work for Forest, I don't work for Ms. Sein's, I don't work for anybody here in this room. I only work for the people of the City of Montevista. And I believe I'm speaking for them in saying that this is not the time or the place, and this whole issue should be set aside until we already, what we already agreed to, which is to review a year from now, along with a portion of a raise that has already been approved. It's being a little picky to take that apart and say that because of this, we need to attack and insult the people of this town even more. And I refuse to do that.
I take exception to you saying that you work for the citizens of this city.
There's no question about that.
We all work for the citizens of the city.
I want to hear that.
And my part is to make sure the citizens of this city have a city manager that is competent and not entry-level, and is experienced to do the best job that he can for them. And he has done a good job for them. And I would like to see this city continue along the good path. I think that there have been goals that have been emailed to all of us that are valid and good and forward-thinking and progressive. Now, we can throw all those things out the window, and I don't think that's what the citizens of this town would like for us to do. I don't think that they would like for us to stop seeking to be better. I don't think they would want any of those things to stop. I would also ask for this two-thirds thing, please be, to be explained to me, because as we have been on this, in the seat for a year, we have voted. It has been four to one, three to two, two to three, any combination that can come out of five people. So where does the two-thirds come in?
So councillor, under laws of order, councillor Johnson is correct. Looking at the new addition, which I just did, it does require a two-thirds majority, which would be four people on a five-member council. It's three to sixty percent. You could argue the percentage points that whether that's, you know, factually correct with a five-member board, which wasn't anticipated by Roberts, but regardless, that is what it says.
So how do we reconcile that, since I have a feeling we can look forward to many three to votes?
Well, you may, and those don't matter as far as an actual vote or a motion, it's simple majority. It only matters in this case of, say, calling the question. Or in a vote, yeah, that's basically probably your only vote. That it requires two-thirds, the rest requires a simple majority, which would be three to.
So I'm addicted from what you say, that it's your opinion that the approximately half the raise that we approved, and then review it again at the end of the year, is not going to be acceptable. If it's not going to be acceptable, then our city manager will be gone.
I don't know if he will be gone or not.
You made it sound that if we don't prove it, that he will be gone.
Excuse me, I take nothing more to you while you were speaking, I appreciate the same courtesy.
I'll be glad to have a proper ticket.
Thank you. I do not know if he will be gone or not. I would not blame him if he did. And then we're looking for a new city manager. And you can probably get an entry-level city manager straight out of school for a lot cheaper than what we're paying him. And we're going to get what we paid for.
This wage increase was projected in the end of the year, right?
It's in the 2021 budget, along with everybody else that was slated to have a raise based on our wage scale and the wage study that was done. We've presented several times before council that this would be done in a two-stage process, and half of it's already implemented. The other half doesn't just affect the city manager, it affects multiple employees in the city.
And revenue this year?
Sales taxes up 20% this year from last year. I don't have the final numbers, because we don't get the final numbers until mid-February to almost March of 2020. But the last numbers that I received and presented to council, it was about, it was between 16% and 20%. I don't remember right off the top of my head. But I know it is up substantially. If you'll recall from the presentation I gave regarding the city's finances and the outlook and everything a little over a month ago, two months ago, that's where we were at, was at 16%.
Now I would like to make my motion again, I'd like to add a little to it. So I'll just start from the beginning. When we reviewed the city manager's contract last month, we did so based on information received from Councilman Larry Foster about the salary of the Alamosa's city manager. The figure he gave us was off by $50,000. Based on this information, I would like to make the motion again that we pay our city manager $121,261 starting tonight for two years. I would like the city attorney to correct the contract and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. This would put the city manager in a fully qualified range according to our wage policy. If there is more discussion, I would ask that Mayor Becker use the two-minute timer, because I believe we have all said what we need to say. That's my motion.
And our second. So we have a motion and a second. Martha's presentation for the contract for the city manager. Is there any discussion? Seinum? Maida?
Counselor Johnson?
Nay.
Counselor Foster?
Nay.
Mayor Potem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion passes as stated by Counselor Locke, three to two.
Mike, please take care of the contract. Receiving approved financial reports, do you have anything? No, thank you. Staff proposals, reports, and actions? Staff reports?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to call.
That's next, council committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did Jim, Christian, Jim, anybody? Anika?
No.
No? Okay. Council committee, city commissions, and council reports? Who wants to start?
Gary wants to start. I want to bring up a past discussion, a lot of other things I would like to get into, but this is kind of primary. We decided to bow back to more the stipend to the Veterans Coalition of San Luis Valley. And it's been suggested that maybe there's other organizations that also qualify for that. I would add that when I got the approval for the $5,000 for the Veterans Coalition, that we also increased the discretionary fund for the council from $2,500, I don't know how it got down that way, but to $5,000. So there's plenty of money, excuse me, for other organizations. But that keeps coming up, that, oh, maybe somebody else is worthy. That's, that's fine. But I would, I've already presented the case for the Veterans Coalition, which I think is, is pretty strong and irrefutable. But I would like to have an open discussion, which would involve a work session, if everybody's available, I'm open to that. I would, if it's possible, I would suggest next Tuesday, the 12th.
Does that schedule a work session on Tuesday, the 12th, actually, we talked about that?
There is.
Well, we haven't actually put it on the books, but we talked about having that, the 12th, having a work session.
Oh. Well, that's what I was going to suggest, is that we have a work session. Whoever has other thoughts about that stipend, bring the evidence regarding American Legion, VFW, whatever, who are also available for a discretionary fund. But this is a special stipend that was, that I had brought up, obviously, just for Veterans Coalition. So I would like to get that completed, it's in the budget already. I would like to get that completed and approved, which we could do tonight unless somebody has some, some other ideas about some other groups.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interject. I would just like to put something out on the table. And the way that we have done it in the past, that any entity who is a nonprofit organization or anybody asking for funds from city council, we actually have a form that those people would fill out requesting for funds, and then we would place that on the actual council's agenda versus a work session. Then that way, the person with that nonprofit organization or whatever organization is asking for money has the opportunity to be here and to speak to council, and that council can make that decision that evening.
Now, that would be fine if it, the stipend, the money, the budget, I had already been approved.
Councillor, on your recollection of that being approved for it, this specific charitable group is not correct. At the time, Counselor Locke said that perhaps we should look at other groups. There is not a line item in the city budget for this group, it's for this purpose, sir. So the work session's a great idea, and...
That's, that's fine. If we would, if there's a suggestion that, that's why I have this guy keep bringing up, is... I keep bringing up, is there's a suggestion for other groups. I have another issue with groups, I'm a Veterans advocate, I'm up for...
So a work session idea is, is great, Counselor, I think that we did that, and we can reach out and see if there's anybody else that, I mean, I don't know who the other groups are that Council Locke was thinking of, but whoever, reach out and put it out there, and it didn't come.
That's fine, I've got some additional evidence that they're affected most, and it's, it's pretty substantial. I don't have any, any real vendetta to see that happen, it's just, like I said, I'm a Veterans advocate, not a veteran, but I'm a Veterans advocate, and I, I have seen nothing anywhere near, come close to what this group has accomplished, even recognized by the National Organization Veterans Administration. So if that's, if we, I'm a little confused here, if we have a work session scheduled, then...
Well, it's not just holding the date, Counselor, because you all talked about it, and so I don't know if we had a topic?
Well, if that's agreeable...
No, we do not have a topic at this point.
If that's agreeable, everybody, if that's possible, next Tuesday?
Well, I think what this Vance was saying was that when someone wants to request funds from us, they fill out a form, they get on the internet. We don't request funds, as counselors, we don't come up here and request funds for nonprofits or for any entities. If I'm not mistaken, that's how it works, they, they come and request funds, which I welcome, though you do that.
Well, and I would just, if I can interject in regards to how the budget was approved, it was approved with the stipulation that we would have a work session at the request of Counselor Locke, so there does have to be a work session regarding this, because that was the terms for increasing that budget line.
Okay, well, let's do that.
Well, the clerk could get the paperwork to...
Absolutely.
The group that we know of, and if any others are interested, they could fill it out, it's not particularly tedious to do, I don't think.
Yeah, that's fine, so, well, that work session, on the floor.
Victor, you got any council report?
I do, sir.
You do not, per due notice. Martha?
Well, first, I'd like to thank all of you at City Hall for a very sweet and unexpected birthday card, thank you so much, it means a lot to me. I want to thank Jennifer Becker and her crew, as long as, as well as Bob Galey with Calvary Baptist Church, for making the tree lane, as Ms. Martin pointed out earlier, and the park parade, a beautiful and a unique experience for our city, considering the restrictions we are under, they saw the challenges and overcame, and I appreciate that, and I admire And I'm glad to be back on a normal schedule, so maybe I can get my days straight again. Thank you.
Larry?
Not much, other than to say that after one year of being on here, it's not exactly what you expected it to be, but I'm looking forward to this coming year, and looking forward to more casual work sessions, and maybe we can, rather than maintain our position in the river, paddle upstream a little.
I will also reiterate to the park parade and all the city crew for all the lights and everything that they put up this town, really stepped up. I always say, "Money's strong," and I believe that, money's strong. There is a lot of water coming down under the bridge, and this was a try near, but we got through it, better than what we had expected, and I feel that being money's strong, there's not much we can't tackle. We don't always, and we won't always agree on what's going on, but we got to be there to support each other. And based on talking about city manager, work sessions, and the review that we done, my email to you guys was pretty blah, but I know Forest has already got stuff coming together, so the work sessions will be happening on a regular basis, because that was a huge thing amongst all of us, that communication is key, and felt like it wasn't being done. So the, that second Tuesday work session, I think that's how it came to standard anyway, will be a regular event, so we can have this meeting, we have questions on stuff, we can discuss it there, as well as discuss maybe stuff that's coming up once, because we will have stuff.
And Mayor, at the next council meeting, I'll have a much more detailed version of that, including some prospective work sessions, and hopefully the council will have other ideas for work sessions as well, but that's a much more detailed presentation that I'll probably send to the council prior to the next meeting, and we can talk about it then.
Outside of that, I want to thank everybody for being here, I want to thank everybody for what they do for the city, and the citizens of this community. I appreciate everybody and everything they've done. So we will adjourn the meeting.